Have a quorum, I'll open the meeting. Jackie, can you go ahead and do roll call for me, please?
Yeah. Commissioner Globo Man.
Here.
Commissioner Partain.
That was a here Jackie.
Okay. Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner McClelland. Commissioner Barclay.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
So now McClelland.
I haven't seen him check in yet.
So Jeffrey, you're new to the commission, aren't you?
Yes, sir, I am.
Well, welcome aboard and have everyone say hi to Jeffrey. I'm gonna jump right into the fire.
Well, I'm gonna try to and not get burned to help.
Welcome Jeffrey, he just overlooked the movies last time, that's okay, that's okay, we won't take a personal. Okay, so do we have any, we have a couple of citizens on board with us tonight, or is there any one of the citizens want to make any comment in general, not pertaining to the hearing items?
Not in the way.
Alrighty. Brian, do you have any minutes from our last meeting?
They're not ready yet, we're gonna do it for the next regular meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move to the public hearing, it is a request of a tentative partition for Highland Ranch properties located at assessor's map and tax lot twenty-one dash thirty-five dash sixteen dash zero zero tax lot thirteen hundred. At this time, commissioners, do you have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to declare?
No.
Nothing in the way.
No, none for me. Nothing at the whack?
Nothing at the whack.
And Dan, you're good?
I'm good.
Alright. Okay, now we'll open the public meeting and continue with the staff report, which I believe, Henry, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Kevin. Kevin, in your script, were there a couple mandatory readings that you were supposed to state, or that you required to state?
Come from you earlier?
That's the script I sent you a couple days back, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you. So Henry, are you talking about notes for planning commission chair or hearing process?
Well, it should say, it should start with failure to raise an issue at the hearing, something to that nature, do you see anything of that?
Are you referring to public hearing procedure?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so this is kinda new for us, we haven't done this one before.
No problem.
So this evening, the planning commission will be holding a public hearing on tentative partition for Highland Ranch properties. You will have the opportunity to provide public testimony or to submit written comments, these hearings will be recorded and held in accordance with the land use procedure required by code and state law. Notice was mailed to nearby property owners pursuant to the development code. After the planning staff presents a staff report, there will be an opportunity to be heard. Procedure allows opponents and opponents of the proposal an opportunity to present and rebut evidence. Before the close of the hearing, anyone may request that the record be held open, an additional seven days to allow for more time to submit testimony, if it's the first hearing. You may want to request a continuance if there is new evidence submitted during this public hearing. The commission can hold the record open or continue the hearing to a date, time and location certain. The public hearing on the tentative partition for Highland Ranch properties is now open. Impartiality, state law requires decision makers to be impartial. And I think we did where we did ex parte. We'll go do it again, does any commissioner wish to make any disclosure or abstain from participating or voting on this application? And because you may gain financially within the area entitled to receive notice of this hearing. You have a direct private interest in the proposal, or because you have determined that you cannot be impartial. Do we have any commissioners that need to declare that?
No.
Nothing at the whack.
And does any commissioner need to declare any contact written or otherwise with the applicant or any other party involved in this hearing, or any other source of outside information regarding the subject of this hearing?
No.
Any commissioners fall into that category?
None at the whack.
Alright. Have any commissioners to decide?
No.
No.
None at the whack.
Does anyone present have an objection of the Oak Ridge Planning Commission's jurisdiction or impartiality?
None. Anyone?
I have an objection, but not necessarily to that.
Hearing none?
Chairman, Commissioner Baker has an objection, says he has an objection, but not necessarily to that, so should we hold that, or do you want to come here?
He has what?
Because he has an objection, but not necessarily to that.
Oh. Does he have an objection to items in the hearing?
Yeah, I do.
You're gonna have to come here, Skip, he's not gonna hear you, that mic doesn't work.
Hey Skip, if it has to do with something in the documents?
He's coming to the mic, Mr. Chairman.
Alright.
Sit right there and talk.
Okay, my objection is, I didn't get this package till yesterday at three, four thirty. I believe we're supposed to get it in a timely fashion, like multiple days before the rule on this. I haven't had time to study this thing in detail, this is too big a thing, just to go willy nilly and just throw it out there within twenty-four hours notice. That's my objection.
Okay, objection heard, noted. We'll get to a part in the hearing. Hey Skip, just to acknowledge your your, what you were saying. There is a part in the hearing where we can, we can make a motion to keep the record open for an additional seven days if you require additional time.
Yep.
Okay.
Or if we require additional time. Okay?
Okay.
The whole idea is, we want, we want to work as a team and we wanna, wanna understand what's before us and make the right decision. Approval criteria. The approval criteria were cited in the notice and are listed in the staff report. Copies were available upon request from the planning department, a fair decision is ensured because the decision will be based on facts as they relate to the criteria or circumstances as evidenced in findings that will be adopted by the planning commission. All testimony and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or circumstances or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code, which the person testifying believes apply to the decision. Staff presents a staff report.
Thank you, Kevin.
Henry, you wanna, wanna hold this until we finish the staff report?
Hold what?
Does any commissioner have any questions, I have the staff at this time?
Oh yeah, 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 we'll have an opportunity at the end, yep, that's fine. Okay. So, thank you, Commissioner, good evening, everybody, my name is Henry Hurley, I work for the Land Council of Governments. The city of Oak Ridge has asked us to step in and help out for planning needs since they lost their city planner over the summer. And we're happy to provide this service to the city of Oak Ridge. Tonight, you'll be hearing about the Highland Ranch partition. Tonight, I'll give you a brief overview of the proposal, I'll list off the conditions of approval. And you'll have an opportunity to ask questions of city staff and the applicant. The property is owned by Highland Ranch Properties. The proposal is to create three parcels, parcel one and parcel two will be developed for home site development. Parcel three is the remainder and will remain undeveloped. The proposed partition is part of the larger Elk Meadows subdivision and is lot thirty-six. Parcels one and parcel two will abut legal access onto a right of way and can readily access city water, sewer and electric. This is the tentative partition map. The proposal here is to partition off the larger lot thirty-six into three lots. The red arrow is pointing to parcel one. Parcel two, excuse me, the red arrow is parcel one. The blue arrow is parcel two, and the purple arrow is parcel three. All parcels will have access onto the right of way at Bugle Loop. Parcel one and parcel two will share a common fifty-foot access easement to gain access off the right of way onto the property. Parcel one and parcel two have the ability to connect to near right services located in the right of way. And no further public infrastructure is required right now, other than the extension of the water main, as discussed by the city engineer in condition number three. This requirement came from Public Works and the city engineer as a result of a recent meeting with the applicant. The water main will be a minimum of six inch diameter constructed of C nine hundred PVC construction. With fire hydrants and valving installed every five hundred feet. And will conform to the standards and construction requirements shown in the Plaid Elk Meadows subdivision. This is another map showing the partition, as you can see, your parcel one is here, parcel two is here. And the current application you're dealing with is this whole lot thirty-six. And parcel three will be the remainder after these two are subdivided off. You can see here, this is the legal access which parcel one and parcel two will take from.
Can I interrupt for a second, Henry?
Sure.
Just for clarification, when I, Commissioner Barclay, just for clarification, when I was going through the PowerPoint that you set three, four hours ago. I'm looking at it, and the part, if you go to the slide, well, looking at this slide, I've got parcel one, parcel two on the, on what I assume is the northeast corner of the property, and then there's a thing that says current application, it's like in the area not bounded by what's being asked for this evening or already concerned, and then to the south of that, it's got parcel three lot thirty-six, which is parcel three, to the south, or the one that's not already bounded by Elk Meadows or the parcel one and parcel two?
Sure. That's, that's a good question, and I can show you a view to kind of clarify that for you, so.
This one shows parcel three, parcel three, in area not bounded.
Yep.
If you go to the next slide, it shows that area for the current application and to the south, parcel three remainder lot thirty-six. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Parcel three is this right here.
Okay.
And it, and it will include all of this down here, it's gonna be the remainder, what's remaining from that lot thirty-six. So lot, lot thirty-six is, is the entire blue area. Out of that, you're taking parcel one and parcel two, gonna be pushed off in the corner, and then whatever's remaining is that parcel three.
By the day, that line is the entire parcel.
Correct.
Got it.
And I'll just, I'll just note, I know Mr. Nichols on the line, so if you have any questions about the surveying and the parcels, you'll have an opportunity to speak with the surveyor as well. Yeah, just raising his hand.
Parcel three in two different places, this last slide and this slide.
But it's, yeah.
Lines there.
Yeah, parcel three is the entire remainder after one and two are gone.
Got it.
Yes. Okay, we'll continue, for those following on the phone that cannot see this, we're on slide six. So this is, this is showing future possible partitions that are available. This is essentially a shadow plat that shows the larger picture of what's going on here. As you can see, the remaining parcel three that is being proposed tonight can be further partitioned to create additional home sites. All the shown potential parcels will abut city right of way and won't require additional infrastructure other than the extension of the water main, as discussed on the previous slide. If the parcels further subdivide, then the applicant will be required to provide infrastructure. Next, we'll get into the conditions of approval. Condition one. I gotta get back to my notes. Condition one states additional development parcels one, two and three, beyond that discussed as part of the applicant's proposal tonight, will require the construction of sidewalk, road and utility corridors as necessary in the locations shown on the approved Elk Meadows subdivision plat. Condition two, the development of the single residence on each of the parcels one and two, as proposed, does not require additional construction of utilities or roadway other than that required to serve the residences and the installation of the water main, as provided in condition approval number three. All such accesses and utilities shall be located within dedicated easements.
I get in here for just a moment?
Sure.
Condition two seems to me, now I may be wrong, states that there's a single resident on each of these parcels, one and two.
No, right now, that property is vacant, and even with an approval of a partition, there will be no homes constructed, this partition does not authorize any construction, building permits have to be submitted and obtained before any homes can be built.
I understand that, but as, as I'm reading it, each of these partitions will only allow a single resident on each of them.
That, that is true, yes. Yes, and the applicant will have the opportunity to further clarify that as well.
Yeah. Just making sure that these partitions, it says a single resident on each partition, and I know we'll later on get into lots versus partitions, because that's something I'm interested in as well, but I just wanted to, that's one of the sticking points I came up on.
Sure. Now, condition three looks wordy, but it's not, and I can sum it up for you real briefly. Condition three gets at the requirement that if additional land division beyond what's proposed tonight occurs, sidewalk, road and utility corridor quarters will be required. Other than that, parcels one, two and three don't require any additional public improvements, other than the extension of the water main, as recommended by the city engineer and Public Works. Also, this condition gets that, that future partitions may occur, as shown on slide six. And this condition was crafted by the applicant's representative and the city engineer. And was largely created out of their recent meeting they had. Condition four, this is a standard condition for any some land, land division in Oregon, that the final plat shall be recorded in accordance with state and county recording requirements. And the final plat shall show the locations of all previously established utility corridors in addition to any new and all, any and all new partitioning. And the applicant shall furnish a copy of this recorded plat to the city for its record keeping purposes. And in condition five, gets that what I was talking about just a few minutes ago, a partition itself does not authorize any construction or building of improvements, the applicant will have to obtain building permits. I'll just state, the applicant will have the opportunity to speak tonight. I recommend that the chair, you know, give the applicant and their team the time they need, they need to speak on their proposal. And that goes for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the proposal, give them the time they need. Granted, their testimony should be geared towards the application and the approval criteria. I'll outline some options for you here regarding the record in the hearing. Actually, I think we might come back to this after. So, I'm gonna stop there. I will state that is, it is fast recommendation that the proposal can be approved, subject to the findings, conclusions and conditions as stated in the staff report. I'm gonna stop there, and then Chair, I'm gonna turn it back over to you. And then, when you get into whether or not you want to keep the record open or continue the hearing, I can outline some options for you in that regard.
Okay, Henry, thanks. I just, time, do the commissioners have any, any questions for the staff? Which is Henry. Okay, hearing none. Testimony, we wish to hear from everyone who is interested in the proposal, please wait until I call on you to present testimony. Then state your name and address for the record. If you're in your testimony, you should address the ethical approval criteria or circumstances and state the facts around the issue. You must raise each issue with sufficient sensitivity to allow other parties to respond to and to understand the nature of your concerns. If you do not raise an issue during the public hearing, you may not use that issue as a basis for appeal. So doesn't look like we have a lot of people, so we'll, you know, try and limit your time, but I'm not gonna put a time limit on it tonight.
Mr. Chairman, it's the CA. At what, and Henry, at what point do we need the applicant to give, offer the opportunity, is that now, or is it gonna be after the public coming?
Chair, does it have in your script the outline of who goes first and who speaks first, you know, in opposition and in favor of the applicant, is that, what's it in there?
That's what's coming.
Okay, yep, go by that, yep.
At this time, I'll entertain statements in favor. Statements in favor. Statements in favor.
I live in that. This is Sharon Lowes, I live in Elk Meadows area, and I'm in favor of this proposal.
Alright, thank you. Are there any more statements in favor? Donald, I see you've unmuted, do you have something you want to say? Oh, you're not coming through at all.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Sorry about that, do we have the owner or the owners represented there?
We do, he's there. Just open.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that he had the opportunity to, if he was there, to have an opportunity to speak.
Oh, certainly, yeah, he will.
Okay. I'm obviously in favor of this application. If you have any questions about how it was laid out, I'm pretty sure the owner would be right there to explain it, so if and I'm asking that you give him a chance to convey his thoughts, if there's any questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so hearing no more in favor, are there any statements in opposition?
Yes.
We have one here in the whack, Mr. Chairman, we just give a minute to get him set up here.
Okay.
Scott Peterson, four, seven, six, eight, three, West Second Street, also an owner of four lots in the Elk Meadows subdivision. I'm definitely opposed to this. All of us bought into the subdivision as a two hundred lot subdivision with seven phases, which is displayed here. You may not be able to read it, but it's supposed to be seven phases. These houses that have been built up there are all three hundred thousand dollar plus houses, and we all bought into a subdivision believing that it would be seven phases. And there's a big track of land that's, they're calling parcel three right now, which is in between Bugle Loop and Highland Ranch, which is, has two streets, three streets actually coming off, but one on Highland Ranch, one on Bugle Loop, one going upwards, one going downwards, and then we have one off of Bugle Loop also coming. That big track of land, if it's not developed and it's just allowed to let somebody just build a single family home there, we're, we're gonna lose the value of our subdivision. And there's a lot of other reasons that we don't want to allow this. It's in the city's best interest to let this subdivision go back to two hundred lots. Only seventy-nine of the two hundred lots have been currently platted out in three phases. Those three phases have mostly all been sold out. Highland Ranch Properties only owns one lot currently, lot six. And since May, they've sold twelve lots or thirteen, they sold one to me as well. And Casey Jones, the original developer, sold eleven lots, plus any lots that have been sold privately. There's plenty of demand for these lots, and to read a statement the city mayor Holston put out, we must, this year, get serious about abating Darilic housing and serious about bringing in new housing. This is a priority if we are to survive. New jobs are useless if we don't have housing to go along with them. We have an opportunity now for a hundred and twenty-one lots to be developed to have housing in a housing shortage. We're gonna grow if we don't have. The other thing is, the city is in financial turmoil. If, if these lots were to be developed, the city would collect all kinds of fees. I believe there's a twenty-five hundred dollar fee that goes to the schools, and then they would collect money for permits and so forth. Then the property taxes on these three hundred thousand dollar houses, a hundred and thirty-one of them, would be enormous, that would bring revenue to the city for years to come. This is the kind of housing that brings in big tax money, that goes to the schools and goes to the city and to maintain things. If we want to turn the city around, we gotta get serious about letting housing be developed here. If they build off these two lots, we'll, we'll take off a bunch of lots that can't be developed. And then we're gonna have a big problem, because they're gonna sell that third lot to somebody, and maybe they'll develop it. These developers, these owners of these properties right now These developer, these owners of these properties right now have sold 13 lots and grossed over a quarter million dollars on these properties. They have plenty of money for the infrastructure to develop phase, what was originally gonna be phase three, which is between Highland Ranch and Bugle Loop. They could get, it was originally platted out for 37 lots right there. There's plenty of opportunity to do that. Give me just a moment. And then if, and if Bugle Loop is not eventually developed, then it won't be adjacent to other land that is not zoned city to be just annexed into the city. We'll no longer be able to bring the next lot next to Bugle Loop where it goes on the upward phase, right where they want to put, their new lots, one and two, up there to eventually annex that. They'll shut off the development for annexing city, properties in the city. Property, for any time you want to annex property into the city, it has to be adjacent to current city property. This will not be city property the way it's being developed. We can't let this go on. The 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 future of this city is dependent on the city council and the planning commission to not allow this kind of nonsense to go on. We've already seen enough problems the way Willamette City was developed with all these screwy little streets they put in back, way back when, that that they let people divide those lots up and divide them up. The city has no room to grow. It's all surrounded by a forest. The only land that's available is up there, going up High Prairie and to that area where Highland Ranch Properties is at. We can't shut this off to to development. These, these, these people are just looking for a way to sell those lots off, maybe get a quarter million apiece, and get there instead of trying to sell the lots for 550 for the whole thing. This is, this is an embarrassment that they're doing this to the owners of the properties here who spent big money to buy these lots. These lots sold for as much as $55,000 to $70,000 in the early days. And people spent money to build 2,500 to 3,000 square foot houses mostly. And to let them make this some property that they can put up next to our subdivision, where we are sold a 200 lot subdivision, is just terrible. We're also, um, I think we should have more time to study this issue with workshops to make sure that the city makes proper decisions based on facts. The gentleman earlier stated that he didn't receive the information till 4:30 yesterday. No time to study the issue. We're not gonna ramp things through like they're done in Congress in the city. We need to study this issue and make sure what we're doing is smart and prudent. Anyhow, basically, you know, this, this is just a bad issue, and thank, thank you for hearing, hearing my opposition.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're on mute.
Go back then. So for the third time, uh, statements in opposition? Hearing none, any in general? Statements in general? Statements in general?
I think Scott Peterson is very negative to the support of the city of Oak Ridge. I do not believe that his assessment is accurate. I am very much in favor of this proposal, as it may draw in more people to develop. 39 acres is a lot to develop, but if you parcel it down, you may have more people to do that. Thank you.
All right.
For the record, ma'am, could you state your name and address?
Nancy, you're on mute, but every time you speak, you have to state your name and address.
I don't want to hear you about what you got to say.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, is a counter to the last comment allowed?
As a statement in general?
Yeah. This is, this is not a, uh, negative towards the city. This is working towards keeping the city going financially. What, what the other person just spoke of is developing two lots, gonna bring in two houses versus the amount of houses we can bring in with all this property.
Well, sir, well, sir, right now, I think that you have a misunderstanding here. He's asking for, uh, partitioning two parts, parcels off, uh, an existing parcel that he owns, so that he can develop those parcels in a smaller scale, as I understand it. I think that a lot of it's, uh, kind of confusing is that we see this state of, uh, placing a residence on a lot in parcel one and a residence in parcel two. And really, that discussion about those residents pertain more to infrastructure improvement in the area. They can't put a residence on any lot without going through proper plan review. As you mentioned, the relative fees and that too, that are required to put a house on a lot. And define a lot. There are no lots currently defined in these parcels.
There was a good platform that parcel all those out into individual lots. And to say that I don't understand it is incorrect. Putting one house in each lot means there's no infrastructure for the streets, and that they're only gonna have one lot, and it won't be partitioned into single lots. If somebody will take the vans and put one house on there, and we'll have county-looking properties instead of a city lots, and it'll stop the subdivision from growing, going up Bugle Loop like it was originally intended. They're not gonna put any streets in there or anything else. This is, this is not a positive thing for Oak Ridge. This is a way to eliminate future potential housing by letting these people partition off two lots and grab a quick sale on those two and not, uh, do what they were supposed to do originally, develop it into all lots. They can spend the money for the infrastructure if they really want it to be future lots. Do, do one parcel, whatever it is, or two, one, number one or number two, whatever it is, make the amount of lots you're gonna get over 15, 20 lots. I can count on the platinum and give you the exact number they get. And they can put the money on for the infrastructure, the streets, stormwater, underground utilities, everything that that subdivision's supposed to be. To let them do this is just foolish for the city to do. They're losing out on future revenue, and this is gonna cost the city a lot of money in the future and revenue they could get in property taxes by allowing something like this.
All righty, sir. Thank you for your input. So, Henry, do we want the, uh, the owners represented to speak now or after I close the hearing?
Final rebuttal after all comments have been stated, which it seems like now they have.
All right. All righty, so right now, I'll ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward and state why this application should be approved.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Nopoom. Uh, my address is 375 West Fourth Avenue, Suite 204 Eugene, Oregon 97401, and I represent the applicant Highland Properties, Inc., and its principals and owners, uh, including Steve Ness. Uh, I'd like to start by thanking the, uh, city staff for the work that they've done in moving this application forward and and having conversations with the applicant to express the, the city's concerns with the proposal on the site and allow us to have the opportunity to kind of really understand what that is and then tailor our proposal and the conditions of approval to address those concerns. Uh, I think they did a great job. They made themselves available to us. It was really a big help. Um, it was a collaborator, collaborative effort, and it's a process that I'd like to see, you know, replicated in other communities around the world, and so kudos to them for the job that they did. I think what might be most helpful for the planning commission is to kind of give you a big picture of what it is that the applicant is attempting to do with this application in particular, and then the property in general. And if I run out of breath from the mask, I'm gonna stop. They catch my breath every once in a while.
You wanna take it off to speak, you can.
It's, it's a little, it's a little unusual. Um, but, so this property, if the planning commission is familiar with it, it's 39 acres, which is a large piece of property. It is vacant, and the applicant is looking for ways to put this property to its highest and best use. And is looking for ways to create revenue, create housing, jobs, tax dollars to bring into the community. And it's very difficult to develop a 39 acre piece of property. If we had that developer who wanted to buy from us and and brought a duffel bag full of cash, we'd be happy to have those conversations, but that's not the situation that we're in. So we're looking for ways to, uh, approach development in a more modest manner that would be feasible. And to be able to get something up there instead of the current nothing that we have on on this remainder of the park, uh, property. And so the concept here and what this application is, is is to create three, uh, parcels. Parcel one and parcel two would, uh, be developable with the residence, and parcel three would be the remainder parcel. And by doing it this way, what it allows us to do is to take advantage of some of the existing infrastructure that is already there to make use of that. And in addition, we've structured the proposal in such a way that the additional infrastructure would be put in when it makes sense to put it in, when there's a level of development that would warrant putting in full streets, full sewers, all of those things that you would typically expect to see in a subdivision, but that really just aren't appropriate when you're talking about a smaller partition. So this proposal times those things together, and what it does is it times the requirement to make a capital, uh, improvement of infrastructure with the sale of the lots that's gonna fund those. So, for example, the, uh, water main issue. And that, that issue addresses a specific concern that the city engineer raised, which is they would like to see the water mains extended between the two residential parcels. Uh, and we said yes, as the applicant, we think that makes sense. Uh, and the timing of that is timed in such that there are funds available in order to do that. And so that's, that's kind of the big picture of what we're doing here. And if we're able, if this is a successful model, we may submit additional partition applications that would follow this model. But, you know, that assumes that this, there's an appetite for this in the market and that we find going buyers who want to do that. We're also continuing to market the property as a whole, and it may be that we come upon that buyer, that developer, who says, you know what? Uh, Steve, I'd like to take this whole property off your hands, and I'd like to do my own subdivision in there, and I've got, uh, the energy and the time, and I've got the financial resources available, and I'm gonna come in and make that happen. And we're certainly willing to have those conversations and listen to them. And we've structured this application in such a way that we don't foreclose that as a future possibility. And what we have done though with this particular application is we've reserved the ability to, in the future, go ahead and continue to break down these individual parcels into either further partitions or further subdivisions. And we've done that through the shadow flats that Henry showed you up there. And what you'll see when you look at those shadow flats is that we will be reserving, uh, between the parcels an area that's gonna be an access and utility easement for the road and the infrastructure. So that way, even if we were to sell a parcel, we've preserved both the ability to, for that parcel owner to further develop their parcel and for the remainder of the vacant property to be further developed. It wouldn't do us any good to transfer away a parcel and not reserve that necessary access for, or there's necessary easements for access and utilities. So on top of that, we will be encumbering this with the same CCNRs that encumber the rest of the Highlands or Elk Meadows subdivision, so that it will have the same types of, uh, requirements and restrictions that exist on the currently existing subdivision. Those or similar ones will exist on this subdivision. So this application is just for two parcels for residences with a remainder parcel. But in it, it preserves that ability to continue to further partition or subdivide so that we can, or either the applicant or a different owner can, if they so choose, continue to further subdivide the property and create additional lots or parcels. The, I think a, a few words about the conditions of approval might be appropriate. I know, uh, Commissioner, I think it was Commissioner Baker, I guess you, you had questions about the application in general, but I know that one of the commissioners had questions about, uh, condition of approval too. So may I also spend a few minutes to kind of give you the thought process behind these, uh, conditions of approval? Again, these are all intended to kind of be read together, to work together. And what they do is, in my mind, is they do two things. One is they give assurances to the applicant and the city as to the timing of when certain infrastructure would be, uh, made and what infrastructure would ma, been made. And the other thing they do is they give, uh, flexibility, and that's flexibility to continue to further develop this property, or to go a different direction, sell it to a developer who wants to come in and develop it all at once as a subdivision. So if you look at condition of approval number one, essentially, and Henry did a good job explaining these already. But that just says that with respect to the initial homes, there is, or the initial residence would be built on each parcel, there's already sufficient infrastructure in place to service those individual parcels, and so that we don't need to go in and build additional infrastructure at this time. With the qualified exception that we've agreed with the city engineer that we would go ahead and run the water main between these two parcels that would, uh, that would have the new residences on them. So that's condition of approval number one. Condition of approval number two, uh, it, it, it's that same concept. It talks about, uh, the installation of the city water main that would go in. And that all the utilities will be located within these dedicated, uh, access easements. So utility and access easements that would run between them. That's where you'll find all of the utilities for the residences, except where they're gonna divert or branch off to serve the individual residences. So again, it's contemplating and preserving the ability to become a full subdivision at some day. Condition of approval number three. Again, it, it is wordy, but the essential purpose of that is to say that there are sufficient utilities, uh, and infrastructure to service those initial, uh, residences on each of the partitions. And if at some point those are further subdivided or partitioned, at that point, that's the trigger to go in and put in additional infrastructure. So that initial house doesn't trigger, you know, full streets or full roads. But if you go beyond that and you further partition it, you would bump up to having to put in that full level of infrastructure. And, and again, it includes the bold and underlying language there. That's the, the most recent addition to talk or address the concern that the city engineer had. And the purpose of that is to extend by section, uh, the existing water main. And eventually, as this continues to be built- And eventually, as this continues to be built out through additional partitions or subdivisions, that water main would continue to be extended, and eventually it would form a complete loop up there. And finally, the last sentence of that is, is the flexibility that I talked about. That's to say, look, in the future, if there's an opportunity to do something else, that, that developer comes out of the, you know, comes down into Oak Ridge and says, Steve, I wanna buy your property. I wanna buy the remainder of that thirty-nine acres and do a subdivision. That's saying, yes, you can do that. You don't have to continue with this path of doing these kind of serial partitions. That's not a requirement. You can come in and do a subdivision all at once and go forward with the property that way. And then condition four and five, as Henry mentioned, are standard conditions for any partition within the state. So I, I hope that gives you kind of an understanding of, of what we're trying to do here. The application itself is really pretty simple. It's three parcels. But, you know, we felt that it was appropriate to explain to the city, because it is such a large parcel of property that's undeveloped, how we see that potentially being developed in the future. And that's the shadow plat. That's the purposes of condition of approval number three that says that this is, if we continue to do this series partitions, this is how we would envision doing it. So we thought it was appropriate to, to go that extra step to let the city understand and the planning commission understand how we envisioned developing that property. Subject to any questions you have and anything, Steve, that you might wanna add. That's all I have for you tonight. I, I wanna thank you, the planning commission, those folks that showed up, brave the weather and the potential snow out there. And everybody who's online, thank you for your participation and, and hearing me, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All righty, at this time, do, do any of the commissioners have questions for the owners represented?
She can't hear you. You're probably gonna have to come.
We're gonna get a chance to review and kind of get a chance to look at things a little better after hearing the negative and the positive.
Do you have any, any questions specific for the representative?
No, I just wanted to be able to look at the paperwork a little bit more. You were talking about us getting a chance to maybe look at it a little longer and, and talk about it. Or do we have to make a decision tonight?
Okay. All right. Have any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Will the staff please provide a summary of the evidence and offer recommendation?
Thank you, Commissioner. So now, I, I have no other comments. And as I stated before, the staff does find that the application can be approved, subject to the conditions, findings, and conclusions I stated in the staff report. I'm, I'm happy to walk you through some of your options you have tonight with respect to the record and the hearing. You can keep the record open and keep the hearing open. In this case, you would continue the hearing to a date certain, and it would likely be your next planning commission hearing date. You can close the record and close the hearing. In this case, you would essentially enter into deliberations tonight and make a decision. And in that case, and you, you would make a motion to perform any of the above. And the motion would require a second, and then you would put it up for a vote. And as I stated before, if the commissioners feel that they have what they need to make a decision tonight, staff recommend closing the hearing and the record and entering into deliberations to make a decision tonight.
We've got one, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioners, come over here.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. And my motion is to keep the record open and keep the hearing open in conjunction with a workshop on the sixteenth of February and a re-initiation of the hearing on the second of March. So we keep it open and have a workshop on the sixteenth of February and meet again on the second of March.
I'd like to second if I could.
And, do seconded?
Jeffrey.
I would. One thing else, so I'll just offer my advice or clarification here, I guess. I'm not, I, I would probably advise against holding an actual workshop as that is outside the scope of the application in front of you tonight. Your decision has to be geared towards the applicable criteria in your code. And, and a, a workshop of sorts would be outside of that. There are many things that can be brought up in workshop that would be off of this application and not applicable.
And that's correct. Commissioners, we, we would, we would need to make our decision based on, based on the evidence that's been presented in the, the applicant's documents. So we can, if, if commissioners need more time to study the packet and get a better education and feeling about what the applicant is proposing to do. You know, I'm all in favor of moving this out to the, to the sixteenth of February.
May I?
With the hearing and the record remaining open until then. Then we would schedule another hearing, and we would make a decision at that year.
Can I jump in here, Kevin?
You can.
This, just from my own perspective, I wanted to be on, on planning commission, in my opinion, failure and success start with planning, good or bad, it, it has a direct relationship on the failure or success of anything. And to, I agree with Commissioners Baker and Partain. I mean, yesterday, we got sixty-three pages of documentation on this matter that, as I understand it, started about a year and a half ago. And is being resubmitted at this point because it was incomplete and, and it, basically the issue got revisited, I think. And, and no slight on, on staff whatsoever. I think the, those involved in, in developing the, the report and Henry and everybody involved in it, it's a very well-constructed report and so on and so forth. But my concern is, yesterday we get sixty-three pages. Within a couple hours of the meeting, we get a twelve-page PowerPoint. Then we get another ten, twelve pages, you know. And, and the commission, especially when half of of it is, is, you know, their first or second meeting at this. You know, that's eighty-odd pages of documentation to digest and, and come to the right decision in a day. So, and I don't believe, unless it works differently, I don't believe we can continue this out to work session on the sixteenth of February, because you can't make decisions in a work session. I think it, it would be a regular planning commission session on the sixteenth and allow commissioners the opportunity to, to digest, you know, a lot of materials. I mean, I planned on retiring last year, COVID- nineteen took care of that one. I was gonna be chronically unemployed, but I'm not. So, you know, I don't mind working any eighty-odd pages, and I have skimmed through it. You know, in a lot of ways, I think it, it's well-presented and, and makes sense, but I think to, to get to the right decision requires the opportunity to analyze the information and make an informed decision. And that, that's just my take on it.
All right, Dan, thank you. John? Do you have something to say?
Well, I actually have a question. Back with the gentleman that from the landowners representative.
Well, currently, we do have a motion that's been on the floor and seconded, so we should act on that.
Well, this would have bearing on how I responded to that vote.
Okay, continue.
And it's just a short question. My, my question is, is the landowner a, does, do they build structures or are they just a landowner who is a, a property management that's just managing the property to sell it off to other contractors who build houses?
No, so the landowner is-
That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I think I understand. Is the landowner a, like a licensed contractor or developer? Licensed with the CCB? The contractors board? No, the landowner just owns the land. This partition, or this process would be to partition the land, and then they could sell those-
For sale.
For sale for somebody else, right? And so you or any member of the public could purchase one of these and then go out and hire your own contractor to come in and put a proposal to build your house.
So it's not like he's going to divide this and then plop a single house on each, each of those partitions?
He is not going to do-
He's going to divide this. He's going to divide this and then sell off the smaller pieces of property to somebody who will then develop them, however they choose to develop.
Yes, that is correct, that-
The single home is an option, but not a necessity.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, we have a motion on the floor. Jackie, will you call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Goboman? Commissioner McClelland?
Nay.
Commissioner Partain?
All right, Jackie, what are we, what are we voting on?
Jackie, could you restate the motion, please?
He moved to keep the record and hearing open and have a work session on February sixteenth with a meeting on March second.
So before we go any further, I thought that we discussed amending that so that we just go to, there's no work session. We go to the next meeting on February sixteenth. I'll have to-
Okay, I didn't, the motion was amended. I know you talked about it.
We'll have to have the person who made the motion amended if they choose to.
There was no friendly amendment, there, there was no friendly amended amendment accepted, so that, that wouldn't be the next step.
So, a- as it stands, the person that made the motion, Commissioner Baker, says he does not want to amend his motion.
My understanding is that a workshop is-
I gotta finish taking the vote.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. My fault. Commissioner Partain?
So she is, Mr. Chairman, she, she needs some more guidance, doesn't understand completely what my understanding is, and is that you're voting to have a work session on February sixteenth and another public hearing on March second. The conversation has been is that we can't really have a work session. It's outside the bounds of our passing.
Right, but that is correct, and, and we're voting on that motion right now, so I don't wanna change my vote.
So your vote, ma'am?
Aye, nay? Did you hear that, Jackie?
Okay, Jackie.
I didn't hear it.
Continue. We're on Partain right now, right?
Right.
She votes aye.
Aye, okay. Commissioner Baker?
Those don't work, I'm sorry. You hear that? Aye, Jackie.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Barclay? What was that?
Nay.
Nay, thank you. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, in, in light of finding out that that's beyond our purview to have that sort of meeting, I'd like to change my vote to a nay, if I can.
Yes, Jeff, I'll allow that. You've reached a further understanding on the point, so-
Yes, I have, thank you.
Okay, I got it.
Is the chair open to an additional motion?
Chair is open to additional motion.
A motion that we continue this, this discussion and decision-making at a regular session on the sixteenth of February, at which point a, a final decision would be made to accept or reject the application.
I'd like to second.
Okay, hold on. Dan?
A regular session on the sixteenth vice a work session on the sixth.
Henry, give me some guidance here. So if we have an open hearing, we have to start with an open hearing, right?
So i- if you continue the hearing to February sixteenth and the record has remained open, what's gonna happen is the same thing that happened tonight is gonna happen again on the sixteenth. Everybody's gonna have the opportunity to talk again, and the record's open for new evidence. I'll likely give another presentation, most likely the same presentation, although, as I said, the record is open, so it is open to new evidence. So if any evidence changes, I would update those findings appropriately. But if the hearing is continued, what happened tonight will happen again. That's how it's gonna work.
So if we close the hearing and keep the record open, then we can make the decision, right?
Good question. If you close the hearing, so really, you, you really only, the reason, the only reason you wanna keep the hearing open is if people didn't have an opportunity to talk. If you, if someone felt, or the chair of the commission felt like they didn't get their opportunity to speak. If you close the hearing and keep the record open, what's gonna happen is the record is open to additional evidence, and all that evidence is gonna be brought back to you on February sixteenth, at which time you will deliberate on all of that evidence and you will make a decision. Typically, without a hearing, typically, typically, I, I see, I see this happen in other cities, but the hearing is usually always closed because everybody has spoken in opposition and in favor. Although some people wanna submit more comments, so you keep the record open, and then you view those comments when you deliberate. So generally, the record, the hearing is closed generally, what I see. But you're certainly welcome to continue the hearing. And like I said, with a continued hearing, you're gonna do the same thing that you did tonight. You're gonna ask for testimony in favor, opposition, applicant, staff report, all of that.
And I'm fine with-
My question to you is, what was your intent?
I'm, I'm fine with that. Most, most of the, the reason that I, I would prefer to make a decision on the sixteenth, it allows everyone concerned to fully digest the, the staff report and the materials.
Okay.
But it should be minor, and, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we're going to, you're making a motion here to close the hearing and, and then leave the record open and meet again on the sixteenth to deliberate and make a decision.
That sounds right to me. Does that, does that sound right, Andrew? I, I just want everybody to have-
Yes, yes, and Chair, this, this does sound, this, this makes sense. This is appropriate for this situation. I, I get the sense and feeling that commissioners haven't had the time to review the materials, and, and that's fine. So i- if that's the case, what I would recommend is that you close the hearing because everybody got their opportunity to speak that was in favor or opposition. And you close the hearing, but you just come back to, to deliberate on the evidence that you haven't been able to read yet. And then you make the decision on February sixteenth. That, that makes sense.
All right, so Dan, can you restate the motion?
A motion that we close the hearing and continue on the sixteenth of February during regular session, at which point we will decide to approve or deny the applicant's request.
And Jeff, you still hold the second?
I hope I'm right this time. Yes, I do.
All right, Jackie, please proceed with the vote.
Commissioner McClelland?
You're muted, John.
Sorry, my space button doesn't always work.
Okay. Commissioner Barclay? Commissioner Gobolman? Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Partain?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye, from Baker.
Thank you.
And close public hearing. All righty, so at this point, we're going to keep the record open and Commissioners, please review the data and we'll set another, another planning commission meeting for 16th of February, if everybody's in tune with that, at 7:00 PM. That all sound good?
Goodbye, man.
Yeah, 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 that sounds good. And I'll just clarify. No new notice is required because everybody got their notice right now. So the city will not send out paper mailed notice to anybody.
Okay. All righty, and so do we have any discussion items tonight, Commissioners? Hearing none? Any announcements? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.
Mr. Gobolman?
Yes.
Is there a place where I can get a hard copy of this proposal?
I can print one out for you at City Hall and we can come by and, and come by and pick it up.
Okay, because I'm really new. I've only been at it a week now, so I'd like to kind of get into it and see what, what is going on with this.
Actually, you, you, we're going to have boxes for you in the courtroom and we'll put it in there.
I feel important now, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Brian and Jackie, for getting the hard copies. I'm kind of a dinosaur, I like to read stuff.
You're welcome.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.